Two of those boxes are highlighted in red. Is that supposed to happen?
Uh-huh. The odd button, no.
The odd button, yes.
Right there. The odd button's in the back if anybody cares. So we'll put this back up here so we don't put anything on top. We've got it off again.
That's good.
How about we do that?
That's where it's been.
I don't know. Last time it was underneath.
It was on the floor.
Yeah.
Last time it was underneath.
All right, that's good.
All right. One of these is just...
Come over there.
All right. I'll get it. Okay, thank you, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on September 20th, 2021. For our beginning of the meeting as we always do, Candace, call to order, please.
Candace Bouchard.
Todd Arshalashi.
Melissa Byrd.
Josh Kelly.
Andy Perez.
Sheila Setlack.
Jack Bork.
Steven Sedlack.
Linda Guapo.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Item three is agenda review, anyone? Todd, we're up on livestream, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, number four is approval of minutes of our regular meeting on September 7th. They have a motion.
Don't move.
For a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Melissa. Anybody have any corrections or additions for Sheila? Okay, see, none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next up is citizens' comments. Would you like to make them now? Okay, Phil. Oh, you got the hang of this, right? You're holding the microphone, you're all set.
Yeah, I know. First of all, I wanted to just thank you all for so far the proposed noise ordinance. I think it's a much more balanced proposal and it's certainly much more business-friendly. And... Can you hear me okay?
Hit the...
He already did, he's on.
Hit the...
It's on, yeah. So my hope is that as you discuss it tonight, that you will support what has been proposed because I think it does provide a more balance and business-friendly. I do have one suggestion that I sent on to Josh and I'll just want to briefly comment on it in a second. The reason why I think the proposal is more balanced, more business-friendly, there's a section there that allows for the fact that there is some high background noise that could exist and then the business can adjust according to that. So it allows, I think, five decibels over the background noise, which I think for my kind of business is very helpful because I think I stressed the last time I was here, when I was trying to do readings, the road noise was exceeding what I was trying to do and so it made it very difficult. And the second thing, and obviously the most important one, is the variance for existing legal businesses that exist, which I think is very important as well. And I agree with all the wording there. The one suggestion that I have, and it's actually a caution, I know the town needs to be very careful to protect themselves so you just don't give carte blanche to an existing business to go on forever and from ownership. But when you change ownership, the way it's worded right now, you need to get a separate variance. And I don't necessarily disagree with that as well. But I think it would be helpful if there were some words in there that provided some guidance for whoever is going to make the decision about that special variance because it's still going to come down to people making judgments. And what I'm suggesting is, while it's very important for the town to protect yourself, I think you also have to look at it from the business side where a businessperson is working to build their business over time and their retirement more often or not is the equity they build up in their business. And if you get a business then that has this caveat on it that says it needs a special exception, it's going to be pretty hard to sell that business. And I'm not saying you shouldn't have the special exception requirement and go through the review, but I think it would be helpful if there was words in there that suggested that if the business has abided by the ordinance and has not had any significant violations or any continual violations, then that the approval of the special exception should not be withheld. And I'm not a lawyer and I'm not sure the best way to word that, but just something that would allow the business to know that, hey, it makes sense for us to keep building our equity in this business because at the end of the line, if you want to try and sell it, you have some reasonable ability to sell it as opposed to having to go to variance where who knows what the criteria is going to be. So that would be my only suggestion. And again, I thank you all for even making the changes that have made so far and I think it's, like I say, it's a much more business-friendly proposal at this point. Thank you.
Thanks. The next agenda item is the Tom Managers' report.
Good evening, everyone. You'll note that the written report that you have in front of you is in a slightly different format than you've seen in weeks past. I'm trying something out new. If you have any feedback for me, please do feel free to let me know. But I'll go down this list and certainly if you have any questions as we go along, please don't hesitate to ask. The American Rescue Plan Act Advisory Group did meet this past Thursday, September 16th, in the afternoon to discuss proposals that had been brought forward for funding. And there were some adjustments that were made, there was a lot of discussion, and it is my hope that by the second meeting in October, I will have a proposal of some kind for your consideration at that meeting. But please know that there's more information to follow. On the subject of Case Avenue, there was a public information session that same evening, this past Thursday, September 16th. Individuals were able to attend in person, watch on TV, and watch online. There were a few questions that were asked and it's part of the federal bridge program is the way that we're going to be funding the Case Avenue Bridge in overall. That means that the federal government will pay for 80% of the cost in repair with the town matching the remaining 20%. On the subject of economic development, I've had the opportunity, as I've talked about in weeks past, to continue to go to different manufacturing plants that we have here in town. In the past couple of weeks, I did have the chance to go to DRT Aerospace in Winchester and to continue to get to know the various administrators, owners, and workers around those facilities. We are going to kick off more discussions in our next sector that the Economic Development Commission is taking a look at, which is restaurateurs. And that will occur this coming week with a roundtable discussion between myself, restaurant owners, and members of the EDC. We have now executed the housing plan contract for help and services from the Northwest COG. That's something that was planned as part of the grant that we received from the state of Connecticut and we will be forming a small committee to help move the development of that plan forward in the near future. On the subject of infrastructure, the Long Range Planning Committee met this, I suppose, a week and a half ago now to discuss roadways and other related infrastructure matters. And the next meeting of that group is planned at the moment for October. The town newsletter has been gone to print. If anybody wants a copy in advance, please let me know. I can print one for you. Otherwise, you'll be receiving it in your mailbox in the next couple of days. I have continued to have conversations with the owner of, the new owner of 35 Willow Street and the development that he is moving along with over there. And that's included discussions with the Connecticut Department of Transportation as they discuss possible improvements to the site that would improve accessibility and walkability in and around the building. I will leave it at that. There are a few dates that I've marked in my report as being of importance, including the next Board of Selectmen meeting on October 4th, which I will not be able to be with you at in person. Please make note of that. If you have anything that you'd like to discuss with me in person before that meeting, please see me in the next couple of weeks. On October 9th, there's a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day scheduled at the Regional Collection Site. And on Saturday, November 13th, you've all received an invitation tonight to attend the Winchester 250 opening ceremony and play performance. So I hope that you're all looking forward to that and that you're marking your calendars for that evening. I believe that kicks off at 6:30. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jack.
It's 6:30, opening ceremony, 7 o'clock.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions that I can answer? Yes.
Josh, just on the Case Avenue Bridge, I know you said 80% is going to be federal government. Do you know what the total has been estimated on the bridge replacement?
I have the number, but not right in front of me. I can get it for you before the end of the night.
Can I get the capital improvement plan?
Bruce?
Yeah.
Two million? Two million.
Again?
Two million.
So we have 20% of 2 million that will be paid.
That's correct. Yep.
400, great. 400?
So it's 400,000, yep.
In the capital improvement plan.
I like this format, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, with that said, he's obviously not going anywhere, so if you think of a question we could ask him later. Now we'll bring up Bruce, Finance Director, please. Also note on the first meeting of next month that Bruce will be here the first meeting instead of the second because Josh will be away.
We want this table a little forward because it's not visible on the camera.
No.
If you'd like to. Trying to be a movie star?
Does want to be a ghost.
Good evening. I have in your packets, you have the August 2021 General Fund Revenue and Expenditure Report. And I'll speak to some of the highlights about that through August 31st, which represents 17% of the fiscal year. We've had property tax collections of $13.5 million, which represents 55% of our budget about what we would expect based on the July collection period. Last year where we were at 53% of our budget. We appreciate very much all the taxpayers for their timely fiscal '22 payments. Total revenues for the two-month period are at $14 million or 40% of the budget. Last year we were at 39% of our budget. So this year is tracking certainly as well as last year. Significant municipal aid, we received $150,000, which is installment one of two on the town aid road program. So total expenditures for two-month period are at $5.3 million or 15% of budget. Last year we were at just a little bit under that, at 14% of budget. With respect to our cash flow, at August 31st, the town general fund had $17.5 million in cash. 11.1 million of it was invested. Other things that are happening in the capital improvement, the major activity is on the Hinsdale School renovation and through August 2021, we have spent $3.1 million on that project with 2.1 million going to the contractor. So that project is being financed with a non-revolving line of credit, which we activated in June. We've drawn $5 million down on that line to help with those payments, but we're also making application to the Department of Administrative Services, who is providing the state funding on that project. So those are the highlights for the financial report for the month of August. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Bruce? Steve?
Refresh me on the ECS funding. We will get three payments during the year. Two are equal and one is a larger payment. It seemed like one year it was switched around, the big payment came first, but we're back to the system of the largest payment comes last in April or so?
That's correct. We get three installments a year. The first one comes in in October for 25%. The next one comes in in January and the final one comes also at 25%. The final one comes in in April at 50%.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome. I'll stick around for the questions at the end of the agenda.
Yeah, because they have to transfer. Anybody have any correspondence they want to highlight?
Candy, I will just note that there are four reports that you're looking at within the correspondence section of the packet. This is just more than usual, so I wanted to make sure that you all saw that there's a police report, a fire marshal report, a tax collector report, and a Winchester Public Schools report. Thank you.
So Boards and Commissions, Steve?
Okay, thank you, Candy. We have one piece of business. We're in a position to nominate Joseph Wulovikis to the Conservation Commission, a permanent membership with a term to expire in May of 2025. And I will make that nomination this evening and will appoint in two weeks.
I'm sorry?
We will appoint in two weeks.
Two weeks.
But the nomination is this evening.
Yeah, that's what I thought you said. Anybody else with Boards and Commissions? Josh, Jack?
No.
I'm sorry? Did you have your hand up?
No, I thought you were looking for a second.
No, he was just, he's putting him into nomination for the next time. But thank you. Okay, next up is some of the old carryover on these ordinances. The first one is the anti-blite ordinance. And Josh, do you have the steps with you? It's not included in here where we are with this. I believe we had said that we, and everybody correct me if I'm wrong, that we were, we gave it another two weeks. So we're now at the point where if we adopt these ordinances, that it goes for another two weeks as, you know, we're definitely going to change them to this and then we would after that, you know, just adopt them fully, if I remember correctly. Right?
That's correct.
Right. So we did that with both of them, right? The anti-blite and the noise?
Well, we did that with the noise, but we also changed the noise, but the blight we kept the same.
All right, but did we say we were going to... We didn't make the blight move to the, on the steps, did we? I don't believe we did. Let's look in the minutes. That would be helpful. So Josh, in the agendas, each time we have ordinances or, you know, things like that, if you could include the steps of where we are on step, that would...
Understood.
Be helpful for us all. Because sometimes we have a bunch of time in between meetings. Not this time. Okay, so we did table the anti-blite until today and we did table the noise. So both of them are up for the next move, which means they get published or continues to be published one more time that we believe that they should be changed and we're going to change them. And then they become the ordinance there. So the first one is the anti-blite ordinance. Is there anything anybody still wanted to discuss on that one? That was the one that Kevin Nelligan, our town attorney, made to recommend the changes due to court cases and processes for that. And we've heard nothing on that from public, I don't believe. Not like the noise one. All right, so the motion would be to approve this for the next step in our ordinance process, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the noticing of amendments to Ordinance Section 180.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions before I call the vote? Okay, all in favor of moving to the next step is unanimous, so the anti-blite, we'll go to the next step on that. Which brings up the noise ordinance, which I think, I know for me, I'd like to have a little bit more discussion on it. I don't know if any of the rest of you feel anything like that. So Josh, is there anything you want to update us on the noise regulations that have transpired over the last couple of weeks?
Not too much. Bill did highlight one of the key pieces of correspondence that I received on this in the last two weeks. And again, he did, I do have the text here that he would like to see inserted if the board is amenable to it. But essentially, he wants to make sure that when there's a change of ownership, that there is a smooth process for the permitting of a new variance and make sure that that's provided for. So any way that we can do that, that's what Bill is requesting of us. Beyond that, it's really just a question of how the board feels most comfortable enacting this regulation. I know that at our last meeting, we talked about, and I've, there have been some changes made within this redlined copy, that slightly increases in the industrial category especially the different decibel levels that can be reached. These now bring the proposed changes into line with the Torrington decibel levels. So that's certainly something to consider. And beyond that, actually, I'm not sure if there... Oh, sorry, and beyond that, of course, the automatic variance granting to businesses legally and currently in existence. So those were the changes that have been made in this redlined copy. If the board is interested in pursuing that avenue, certainly we can use the text that's provided here. If the board would rather go in a direction that would allow, for example, a month time, a month's time before we move forward with the adoption of this process and businesses in the meantime can apply for a variance, that's certainly another avenue that could be pursued. So that way the noise ordinance is not enacted at a time when variances are still being granted. All the variances could be granted in advance of it taking effect. So just some different food for thought for all of you to consider.
So on page four of eight in the chart, under production and innovation, it's moved to 70 instead of 65, correct?
Yes.
What other ones changed?
66 is also up from 65. That's production and innovation, where it meets Highland Lake Business District, Town Center, and Town Gateway. And then it's also up from 60 and 50 in the following categories in the, under daytime hours and under nighttime hours. Going down to the next row, which is beside Highland Lake Business District, Town Center, and Town Gateway, when it's emitting from one of those categories and going into production and innovation, that's risen to 62. When it's going into the Highland Lake Business District, Town Center, and Town Gateway districts, it's risen to 62. And for daytime hours and nighttime hours in residential areas, it's gone to 50, it remains 55 and 45. And the same is true in the row immediately below that. It's risen from 60 to 62. It is at 65 when it's going from a residential district into a commercial district and it remains at 55 and 45 respectively for the daytime and nighttime residential hours.
And then what page is that other language on that?
The other language that I referenced is at the very end under, it's 270-9 variances and it is subsection D. All registered businesses legally operating within the town of Winchester at the time. So that's the bottom of page seven to the top of page eight. And it goes on from there.
Where are the nighttime hours? I can see the daytime hours between 7:00 AM and 9:59.
Are you back on page four?
I'm on page one.
On what?
Bottom of the chart.
On the chart.
Okay, hold on.
Nighttime hours are on page two. Any hours not designated as daytime hours as defined above is considered a nighttime hour. It's about a third of the page down?
No, I see it.
On page two? Oh, okay.
Right.
Well, I'd like to have more discussion on the grandfathering of this that we have in D. Either, I'd like to... I guess I'm stuck and I know I've had some comments on the grandfathering piece, even at our meeting the last time. We had some, you know, comments on that. So those that we know are a legal business that are already registered and we know about...
Right.
I agree with all of those, you know, being, you know, taken a look at and granted their variances to. What I'm worried about on this is the same thing a couple other people have been worried about, is that what constitutes the grandfathering? You know, like, it happens, like, one other ordinance that we have up at the lake and the docks and grandfathering. It's a constant, constant misunderstanding. It's a constant, well, what is grandfathered? What isn't grandfathered? Does it run with the land? Does it not run with the land? Was it in a photograph in 1960? Does that mean it's grandfathered? Is it new owners? You know, what exactly does that mean? So we, of course, obviously want to help Bill, I'm not talking about your business or anything like that. We want to help the businesses that have been there and have been emitting the same, I guess, same noise that's been okay with us before this. But how do we make sure that we're not just putting people in there that are running a business now that hasn't either been registered? The equipment hasn't been registered, is brand-new with their activities on site. So should we grandfather or should we give businesses like three to four months to register and get their variance right now and then enact this particular ordinance?
Well, first off, we need to purchase the equipment to test the sound.
Right.
Since we don't have that yet. We don't have, we need to get the equipment to test. That needs to be, I'd like to know, that was a question I have, when are we going to have the equipment to test? Before we put this in place and vote on it, we need to have the equipment to test it. And then, you know, perhaps, like you're saying, you know, have there been complaints or how do we go about knowing if businesses are within these decibel ranges? I don't know.
And I can speak to that briefly. I think it's a bit of a chicken and an egg situation where I haven't wanted to buy anything before now, not knowing if this was going to pass.
Right, right.
But I can say that we can order it as soon as possible. And certainly if we're giving an amount of time for businesses to register in some way, I highly doubt, at this point, I think shipping lines are pretty well stabilized for noise emitters at least. I don't know about lumber and metal, but I have confidence that we can acquire something.
Right, I do too. It's just something, I'm just saying, I think we need to have at least one...
Yeah.
...in hand so that we can enforce a blite ordinance. Otherwise, we can't enforce it.
Right. So again, with this ordinance too, there's no rush for us to do anything because I think we want to get it right before we just...
Right.
...put it through because there's too many things riding on it right now.
Right.
Just curious, are the Torrington regulations, do they address an issue like this or are you aware?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And when did, we don't even know when that, actually, their ordinance went into effect, do we?
I can look that up quickly, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
I was thinking about the ownership aspect, the transfer of ownership. I was thinking that maybe no variance is needed if there has been no equipment changes when transferring ownership. So that if you're selling the property, it's already in compliance and you're selling it, you're not making any changes. If the new owners choose to get new equipment, they'd have to do a variance. They might have to. But if there is no change of equipment at the time of transfer, I don't see the need for application of a variance.
It's possible an owner could change equipment just before he sold, too. Right? I mean, if I was in compliance, grandfathered, and I decided to sell, but the new people were coming in with a question of, gee, I got new equipment, it's going to be louder...
Why don't you buy it and then I'll buy it after you install it?
Yeah. So you still have that condition. It's not an easy answer to, I mean, is somebody always going to do something like that? No, it's just dealing with the issue that we're talking about.
Well, maybe you give a timeframe.
How do we variance?
Maybe you give a timeframe. If no new equipment in the year before or something, or six months before, give a timeframe of, you know, that, that would, they'd have to make that deal way in advance. I don't know.
So Torrington's ordinance was adopted and it was effective as of April this year. It doesn't have any grandfathering clause and their variance clause, as issued by the chief of police, is almost verbatim the clause that we used. Most towns recycle language that's been tried. Most towns recycle language, that's been tried and true in the court of law, and no need to reinvent the wheel when it comes to that. So a lot of it will look similar between these towns.
Maybe we don't need a grandfather.
Right. I think, I think we won't need a grandfather if we let variances be applied for prior to the adoption of this, or prior to the going into effect.
How are the businesses going to know about this?
Well, we, I would imagine, Josh, we have a business list in the assessor's office, right?
We do. We have a business list in the assessor's office, and the EDC has been regularly updating their more personal business contact list. So we can use both of those avenues to make sure that we're reaching out to them.
So you're going to send them out a postcard notice that there's a, a variance?
Maybe they should have one now.
Certainly. That's, that's something that we could do. We can email anybody for cost-effective purposes that we need to, and, and postcards can go out to those who don't have email addresses.
So what I'm hearing, just for a process point, is that we're not going to move this ahead right this, this meeting. So we need to have, figure out this section. All the other sections, is everybody okay with the upping of the decibels in, mostly in the production and innovation section? Is everybody okay with all the other sections? Except that we have to work on, down here, the two-seventy-nine variances to address two issues. Do we really want to grandfather? Or do we want to give them, like, three to six months before this goes into effect? And then two, to make sure the sale of a business is covered? If they're, if they receive a variance, that the sale is covered as long as the equipment remains the same within six months to a year or something like that? Does that sound fair, Bill? Does that sound fair?
Yes.
Or no? I'm asking Bill.
Okay. I think, yes. Actually, from my point of view, it's more, less important than changing the equipment, more important, has the business been operating without any significant violations or continual violations?
Well, that could, yeah, that could be.
If you have a source of changing equipment, once a year, we turn in our personal property companies.
Right.
So you can have a source for all the equipment changes. And the equipment changes could be, because you, it doesn't necessarily drive noise. In fact, in my particular case, one of the noise things, I think I pointed out to you, comes from the sound of the water coming out of the nozzles. That's kind of, you know, that's more than equipment change.
Or something breaks, so you have to replace it, so, you know.
I just want to make sure we get all the notes down before we start reformulating again.
What zone are you in, Bill? What zone are you in?
Single family. Two, what do you call it, CSI or something?
Gateway.
Gateway?
Gateway next to residential.
So, so with this language change, too, I think, Josh, you probably want to check in with Kevin as well
Mm-hmm.
on this. So just for purposes, so that we give Josh some direction, do we want to keep grandfathering or change it into, you know, six months for the variance? Or three months or?
I'd say three months, and I, I like, what I really like is the notification to businesses that we are creating something that's going to impact them.
Right.
And that we're giving them a heads-up, and we're going to enforce it. So I think they will take it, I think it's more effective that way, that, you know, we're making, whatever changes is, I even think almost the blight ordinance should go to businesses as well, but I don't know.
So what about the rest of you?
I think you need to keep it simple. I think if you start with the grandfather, you, like, Candy, you said, it causes a lot of confusion, a lot of history. If you stay with the variance that are giving, given notice, ample notice, they can apply for the variance. I think we need to stay away from the grandfather clause.
I would agree with that. It does put the onus on us to do the notifying, though. So that's, that's more work for somebody.
But it's communication with the business, which we haven't been doing. I think it's, I think it's very forward-thinking.
Even if we, if we grandfathered it, and somebody got issued a citation, they would have to come in anyway, and that would cause a lot of work as well, to figure out when they were established, if they were there, what's different.
They can't say they didn't know we were doing something. Because some of them may not live here.
I also think that with the, the noise and whatnot, if, we would pretty much know, or Josh and his office staff would know, where the complaints have been about noise prior to this. I think a lot of what we're addressing right now isn't because of businesses, we're addressing it because of a residential. That's why we're back here, right? On the noise ordinance, if we really want to look at the origin of why we got to look at the noise ordinance, was because of a residential issue, not necessarily a business issue.
Right.
So I would imagine most of our businesses are, are, are okay with most of the neighbors, because some of them don't have neighbors, really, which is, which is, I guess, a good thing. And, and the ones that do are being pretty good neighbors at this point. So I think we need to have Josh go back and relook at this section with everything we said here tonight, but just want to make sure that everybody has had any input you want to give.
At our last meeting, John Weorah pointed out about a business that came in next to him, moving trucks in and out. How is that going to affect, or from what his complaint was, or his issue was regarding the noise of a new business coming in with trucks moving? And they have to move trucks to get their supplies in and out, or their services in and out. Is this going to hamper that situation?
Well, I think there are a couple of things to take a look at with this. First and foremost, within the variance section, even if we don't include the grandfathering clause, it does very specifically state that the noise levels generated have to be, they don't cause an unreasonable hardship to the applicant. So in the event that there is a business that has an essential need to be operating at those hours, moving trucks, whatever the case might be, that's something that needs to be taken into consideration, is required by the ordinance to be considered. So we won't be causing any undue hardships onto businesses in their need to operate. That being said, I, not just John, but I think that there have been a few noise complaints that have come forward in recent days, that aren't necessarily just about the moving of vehicles or the opening of, of gates, but about music coming out of those trucks, but about, you know, the, the things that are being said back and forth between workers as they move along their, their evenings, their days, whatever the case might be. And that is not essential. It's not essential that music be playing out of a truck every time a door be opened, et cetera, et cetera. So there are some things that we can take a look at, and we can make sure are not unreasonably impacting our residents, but there are other things that we'll make sure are, continue, continue to be allowed, so that our businesses are comfortable being here.
Fair enough.
I think also, if the communication is to them, and this is in regard to residents, highlighting that these are, you know, so that we can all live together, it makes them more aware of their level of noise and what is necessary and unnecessary, as you said. I've had this with one of my neighbors and my dogs, and it's a simple conversation to address things differently. So I think if you send the communication to the business and let them know, we're, we're really looking at this for everyone's benefit. I think they might look at themselves and how they can be a better neighbor.
Okay, so we're, we're going to take this and hold it again until the next meeting. Josh will take it, go back and start looking at the words and the concepts that we had tonight, and he will also get ready the communication plan for, not only just, I would think, not just for the businesses, but also just in general, the town with even residents. You know, maybe like, prepare something with, on the news thing that the board of selectmen continues to look at, the noise ordinance. You know, please take a look if you, you know, if you have any concerns.
Do you need a motion to purchase the readers?
No. We'll go ahead, and the chief's already been looking at them, I know.
So make a motion to table till October fourth, board of selectmen meeting?
Second.
Or do you want the next one? Because you're not going to be here October fourth, right?
Yes. That's fine. So, I don't know that we need to, I don't know that we need to table it, we just don't make any motions to adopt it. I mean, if, if you want to table it officially, officially, you can, but we didn't last time carry it over.
Josh, other than what we've heard at these meetings, and what we individually have heard and maybe shared with you, has there been no public comments made?
No, I have had no new public comments. Sorry, I should, I should rephrase that. I have had no public comments from new individuals sharing new points of view. I have had some folks reach back out and say, I hope you continue to review this and move it forward.
People that you've heard from before.
Yes, people that, I've already shared those public comments with you. Right. But nothing new beyond that, no.
Okay, so we're going to leave it under unfinished business for the, either, either Josh will have, if he has the language done for October fourth, we'll take it. If not, the seventeenth, we'll, we'll do it then.
Sounds good.
All right. All right. So on the new business, A, refunds as recommended by collector of revenue, our usual, every meeting refunds. So Josh?
Yes. And so tonight, you have four different certificates of correction that have been completed, that are slated for level of reimbursement, and then an over, and those are all on motor vehicles. And then on real estate, there's one overpayment that was issued to the town, and we're looking to reimburse, give that overpayment back. The total for all of those refunds is $474.20.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I make, I move that the board of selectmen authorize refunds recommended by the collector of revenue in the amount of $474.20.
There's a second, Linda, thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. unanimous. Next is line item transfers, Josh or Bruce, whichever one you.
You want to take it from here?
Yes, thank you. So we, we have two budget transfer requests for you to consider. The first is item number twenty-one-sixty-six. This budget transfer request relates to fiscal twenty-one. We've just are closing out that year's expenditures, and we have determined that based, we've had to accrue some expenditures because of some liabilities we became aware of. And one of the purposes of this is to give us authorization to actually liquidate those liabilities, because they were not budgeted. So we have taken some budget surpluses from different departments and reallocated into some line items, the ones, the five line items at the bottom of that first page, that will allow us to make those payments, as well as resolve some department deficits that have arisen as we've finished out the expenditures for the year.
Okay, so I would need a motion from the board for the line items we're taking money from, to the line items that we're giving money to. Who would like to do that? Todd, you look like you'd like to.
All right. So I move that we approve the line item transfers for, from account one-dash-one-one-zero-dash-one-nine-three-dash-zero-zero-zero, secretarial, in the amount of three thousand. From account one-dash-one-one-five-dash-nine-hundred-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, medical benefits, in the amount of seven thousand. From account one-dash-one-one-seven-dash-nine-hundred-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, medical benefits, in the amount of four thousand. From account one-dash-one-four-eight-dash-one-nine-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero, administrative, in the amount of forty-five thousand. From account one-dash-one-four-eight-dash-nine-hundred-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, medical benefits, in the amount of twenty-five thousand. From account one-dash-two-one-one-dash-nine-hundred-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, medical benefits, in the amount of fifteen thousand. From account one-dash-two-one-three-dash-eight-three-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-one, demolition of buildings, in the amount of fourteen thousand. From account one-dash-two-one-three-dash-eight-three-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, relocation costs, in the amount of three thousand dollars. From account one-dash-two-one-three-dash-nine-hundred-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, medical benefits, in the amount of four thousand dollars. From account one-dash-eight-one-three-dash-one-nine-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero, general labor, in the amount of five thousand dollars. To accounts one-dash-two-one-zero-dash-one-nine-seven-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero, overtime, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. To account one-dash-two-one-three-dash-one-nine-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero, secretarial, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. To account one-dash-nine-one-one-dash-two-zero-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero, sick and vacation pay, in the amount of three thousand dollars. To account one-dash-nine-one-eight-dash-nine-three-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero, police verac contribution, twenty thousand dollars. And to account one-dash-nine-one-nine-dash-three-eight-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-one, workers' compensation insurance, thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Todd. May I have a second, please?
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Go along with us. Bruce, the administrative line that we took the money from, that was because we didn't fill something, Brett?
Yes, that, that was the line that was set up for the town planner, that was, position that was vacant.
Right, for the first part of the year.
Yes.
And then the police verac count, that's the retirement agreement, right?
VBA is the voluntary employee benefit fund that, that the police union is supposed to set up to provide post-retirement health benefits to their officers. That was set up, I think, in the contract that was initiated around 2014, and so we have been, we have been budgeting for the towns portion of that, which is twenty thousand dollars a year, but the, the officers also get contributions from the outside service, services that they provide. Those vendors provide a, an hourly stipend based on the number of hours that they, that the officers work. And then we have been, we receive that money, and then we have been setting it aside to give to their trust once they create it, but they have yet to create it. So this is, this is something that came out, it was confirmed in the recent police union contract that you approved, I think, in May.
Are there any other questions?
I just have a question. You're taking fourteen thousand dollars from demolition of buildings.
So we have, in the building department, there was fifteen thousand dollars budgeted for demolition. So we have, in the building department, there was $15,000 budgeted for demolition of buildings, and it wasn't used this fiscal year, fiscal '21. There were, there were, there were some demolition that occurred, but it came out of the blight fund, the anti-blite fund, where we collect blight fines, and then we use that money to, to cover the demolition costs.
So that $14,000 is not the blight fines?
No, it's not related to the blight fund, that's correct.
Thank you.
What would it be used for? What would an example of it?
Before we implemented the blight, anti-blite program, we had set aside a small amount every year in the building department for some demolition, if we had to provide some, because we had no other source of funds. But over the last three or four years, you know, the blight ordinance has been enforced, we've been collecting blight fines, and we've been using that to accomplish the demolition. We, the demolition that has occurred on some of these buildings far exceeds what we could have budgeted out of the general fund.
Well, the other thing is too, is if we have to take something apart at Public Works, something has to be taken apart for recreation, you know, because if we have to do the dugouts at recreation, that could be considered demolition.
That could be, yes.
So there's always been something, some small thing that's town-owned, outside of blight, that every once in a while needs to come down.
It was a very modest amount. There's not a lot you can do for $15,000. But this was, this was remaining in the building department budget, and so it was available to, to help with some of these other needs.
So if we had to take down the skate park wall, that's where that money would come from?
Yes.
I thought about like that. Even the skate park itself, you know, because there's so many structures in there that had to come down and get rebuilt. Any other questions?
Hey Bruce, I don't have my calculator here, I've been trying to do this the old pencil-paperway. I don't know, I'm not coming up with the same figures top and bottom.
$125,000. $125,000.
Yeah, on the bottom.
Both of them.
But not the top.
Yes.
And the second transfers too, there's a typo. Like the next one you're gonna do too, there's a typo, $20,000 to $60,000, or I think you meant $20,000 to $20,000? So is there like a little, maybe up top? But we don't have, we transferred individually, we haven't transferred by a total, so we should be okay, but is that what you intended?
Are we off $1,000?
Well, when I added up the top column under the description, it was different to the top, the bottom column.
I apologize for that, I thought I checked that.
Unless my skills and addition have.
Josh is doing it right now, by the way.
Yes, I am.
It could be it, you know, I don't have my calculator.
What did you calculate for the top part, Jack?
120?
I had 122, so that's.
What do you have, 125?
I had 122.
I mean.
14.
Oh, I have 125. I must have missed the $3,000 in there.
Seven, 14.
I got 125 on both.
24.
Yep, I have 125 on both.
125.
Did you use your calculator?
Hello. I don't have my phone, I left on the car.
Just checking.
Actually, see, little notes?
We could have a little contest right now if you'd like, everyone.
I got 125 on top and bottom.
I am not doing it.
I didn't read the description, I just.
Waiting for all of you.
Yeah, confirmed it twice now, it's 125 on each.
Yep, that's what I get.
Okay, then. So any other questions? If not, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, now for your second set, but there was, I believe, a typo in the description. $20,000 to $60,000 in that little square box.
Oh, you're right, that is, that should be, the bottom one should be 20.
It is correct on the transfer form, yes.
All right, so you want to tell us what that one is?
So, in the Department for Town Hall, we have contracted services budget, which was created back in March, and we at the time anticipated that we would use an outside contractor to clean Town Hall. Well, based, we did an evaluation of that contractor, and it was determined that the work that we needed to be performed for the cleaning Town Hall on a regular basis was better accomplished with a part-time employee. So that, I think, person was hired in July, does that sound right?
Yes, July, that, June or July.
Yeah. So what we have now is, is we have a part-time employee who's doing the work, but the budget dollars are in contracted services. So we're asking you to approve a transfer within that department from line, from contracted labor to.
Overtime.
Yeah, to custodian position, part-time depart, account 127-192, and I see that, yeah, that's the account that it should be going to, 192-0001. And that will allow us, again, the actual dollars will now then line up with budget dollars if we can do this transfer.
So may I have a motion from someone with that, and with the, Melissa?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the line item transfers from $20,000 contracted labor, 127-831-0000, to $20,000 custodian position, part-time, 127-192-0001.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
And just the citizens' comments? Bill, anything else?
I'm too quick, I got you going too fast. I was obviously hoping you'd do a grant on the fall, since you've decided not to do that, I would just make one thing. I think it's more than just notifying the businesses that they got to apply for the variance, because if somebody said, "Okay, I got to apply for the variance," well, you're gonna have to have a process for how you're gonna do that then, because I don't think you're gonna take my readings, I think you're gonna have to have an official come out and do the readings with us and so forth, so it's, it's not just, it gotta be a notification, you better be prepared to have a process on how you're gonna manage that. That'd be the only comment I would make.
Right.
Okay? I understand why you want to do it that way, because it then keeps it clean, I'd rather it not be that way, but I understand it, but you're gonna need some kind of process like that. That's all I would say.
The idea is to keep you all operating? The idea would continue to have you all keep operating, we don't want to get.
Right, no, I understand that, right, right. I mean, I only had, I've been in the car wash business like 35 years, and when I had the one down in Torrance, and I got one noise complaint over the years I was there, and actually the Torrance Area Health was the one that came out and did the readings, and we weren't in any violation, but that's where the, how the enforcement was done back then, I don't know how it's gonna be, it sounds like it's gonna be the police department now, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, just stay in touch with Josh, you know?
Yeah.
Or he'll stay in touch with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next item is Selectmen's comments and reports. I'd like to just make a comment, and just because I want to be on the record, we're not gonna know the outcome on the town clerk's election, you know, until November, and so I figure I better say this ahead of time versus after the outcome is known, is that I am in favor in the future of the town clerk being hired in the same manner that we hire a tax collector, or a planner, or anything else by the, by the town manager, because the position has become so complex these days, and has so many, well, I'll just leave it at that, I just want to be on record for that, for the future, before I get, before any election outcome is known.
And that would require a charter change, right?
Yes. Which is why I want to be on record ahead of time, because I don't want anybody, I just don't want to be in a position later on where somebody goes, "Well, you know how that could happen," so. So that's my only comment.
Josh?
May I comment on that?
No, well, I, it's not really, I don't know.
No, not for discussion, but just in the reading that I have been doing about the same objective, more and more small towns have been going into that direction.
Yes.
Appointment, the requirements that are being put on the position of town clerk, especially for the election requirements, seem to be immense, and the office is so, so difficult to, to learn into. Your point is well made.
I just, I don't, like, I don't want to interfere with what's gonna happen, but I just don't want to come after.
You can't interfere with what's gonna happen.
No, but I don't want my words to get in the way, I don't want them to get unraveled, I just, that's why I didn't really want to go too far with that, just.
In terms of the finance director position, has that gone out?
Yes, it has been posted. It's on the town's website, it's on the state's hiring website, it's on CCM's website, it's on the government financial officers' website, so we've circulated it far and wide as, in the places that we would circulate any other job, and I'm, that closes on October 15th is the last day to submit applications, so I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing some great ones.
So what, when does the, how much overlap are we gonna have?
Our hope is to have overlap with at least, I would say, between two and four weeks in December, and I've started to communicate a little bit with Bruce about how much time he's going to have in December, and be available for that overlap, and certainly as we start reviewing candidates, we'll make it known that it's our expectation that they are overlapping to some extent with him. So we want to be straightforward, transparent, clear with everybody about our expectations, and that will make sure that we find the person who is the perfect right fit.
Well, yeah, that's why I asked how much overlap, because perfect right fit, and by the time you get through with all your, you know, the whole process, reviewing applications, getting it back from civil service, you interviewing, or committee interviewing, and Bruce being involved. Bruce, what are you doing in January?
I can tell, whatever transition you're in.
Just don't be like our transition, which was, well, our process, which was a while. But right fit is important.
Sure.
Anything else?
I just have one quick thing. We all know that everybody has their own areas of concern, and mine is public safety and crime. And if you weren't paying attention, in Connecticut especially, over the last, well, the last year, there's been an uptick in violent crime, juvenile crime, in, mostly in the big cities, but it's spread out. If you did not see, at 1:00 this morning, a Farmington police officer was injured, he was hit by a car and pinned against another car while responding to a call of someone crawling under cars, trying to cut off Cadillac converters. That car was stolen out of Meriden or Middletown, I believe. There was a postal carrier today stabbed in Hartford. And over the last week, there's been car thefts and goshen, so just be vigilant, make sure you lock your cars, your homes. You know, it seems that sometimes the governor's more focused on extending his powers instead of tackling the crime, the rising crime and juvenile problems that we're having, but that's a conversation for another day. Just, everyone lock your cars, you know, go back to the, if you see something, say something, you know, call in suspicious activity that you think you might have outside at night, better to be safe than sorry, and under no circumstances should you approach someone outside your car, you should be calling the police and letting them deal with it.
I'd like to also add, a woman was kidnapped in Marlboro, which is Boondocks, add a big Y, put a bag over her head, hit in the face, and they stole her ATM, drove her around, she was dropped off in Berlin, and the car was recovered in Hartford.
Lit on fire.
Pardon?
They lit the car on fire.
Oh, lit the car on fire, right. So it's not only, it's everywhere you are, and these are juveniles again, scary out there.
Well, the good news is I'm not usually ever scared in Winston. I'm vigilant in Winston, but I'm not scared in Winston.
Right.
Anything else?
Move, adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I may be not vigilant enough, I should say.
That big Y was my grocery store of choice when I was an Ebert, so that's settling.